Good evening. Gentlemen, you want to run the show? Go ahead. Welcome, guys. We're going to start a short TV show here. Keep you updated on the district.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. Fall has arrived and there has been a flurry of activities across the North Penn School District. So let's get started. At the annual North Penn High School Homecoming festivities, seniors Ben Harttraft and Victoria Bronley were crowned as the 2016 Homecoming King and Queen. Ben, who is known as the honorary mayor of North Penn High School, can now add "King" to his official title. Just in case you missed it, here is the hit scene around the world by North Penn's own Kelly McNamara. Kelly, who was the first female kicker on the Knights football team, became a viral sensation with a touchdown-saving hit. She was interviewed live on ESPN Sports Center and CNN's Headline News. She also gave interviews to People Magazine and the Philadelphia Eagles Organization, just to name a few. And during that game, Kelly also helped her team remain undefeated that week by kicking two field goals and three extra points. Class of 1981 alum Scott Moyer received the 2016 Lifetime Achievement Hall of Fame Award from the North Penn Alumni Athletic Association. Moyer, who retired as a commander from the Navy, spent several years as a pilot of the Elite Flying Performance Group, the Blue Angels. He and eight other alum and two state championship teams were all inducted into the NPAIA Hall of Fame earlier this month. While all the sophomores and a portion of the junior class were taking the PSAT, the rest of the students at North Penn High School experienced the High School Nation Tour. Featuring Drake Bell of Nickelodeon's Drake and Josh fame, the music festival gave students the chance to enjoy a brief break from studying on a beautiful October day. Inglewood Elementary School has a challenge for Montgomery and Nash Elementary Schools. Every day, 36 children are diagnosed with cancer. To raise awareness and funds, Inglewood has kicked off the mascot challenge for childhood cancer. To raise funds, the schools are challenged to dance with their mascot for 36 seconds. And finally, congratulations to Pendel Science teacher Matt Wendell for being named as an exemplary teacher by the Montgomery County Science Teachers Association, Middle School Division. Each school year, the association selects one STEM teacher from elementary, middle, and high school across the county for this distinguished honor. And do not forget to download our app and check your students' grades, quick links to all of North Penn's social media, and so much more. Search "North Penn" on the App Store and download it for free. The app is a great way to keep all things North Penn right at your fingertips. And while you're online, be sure to check out our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/mtv for all these stories and all of our shows 24/7. For North Penn Television, I'm Aaron Heebner. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome and good evening again. The board did meet this evening in executive session, October 20, 2016, from roughly 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., 7:20, to discuss matters of personnel related to teacher discipline at the middle level, potential litigation related to property assessments and appeals within our community borders, and negotiations, specifically healthcare programming. It is now time anybody who wishes to speak to the board. The Audience of Citizens is open. Please step to the microphone and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook for us. And speak your piece.
Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. It's actually Montgomery Township. And I'm going to speak on a couple of topics tonight. I should have done this ahead of time, but I was negligent in that area. Okay, my name, as I said, is William Patchell. I live at 404 Bonnie Lane. I've lived there for about 25 years. So I figure that I have seen the district make incredible progress in the academic pursuit and for the things and the quality that are delivered are really quite amazing. But as you know, in every organization, we do have things which are not at that level that there is always room for improvement, no matter what it may be. I see some of the people in some distant countries that they need to take an exam and they're crying their eyes out if they got a 96. I believe that's in India. So there's very rigorous standards and I can't imagine that's quite a bit of a stress for somebody who's like 15 or 16. So, but I guess that that works for some cultures. The first thing I wanted to talk about was, has anybody driven by Pembroke? I was pretty amazed by the pit. I don't know what to call it. It is still construction in progress. I can't help but thinking, I heard the item come from Miami. Oh, yeah, we have Zika. Please don't come to the area. We don't know how this is going to work out. I would hate to think that Zika would follow West Nile up to our little... And there we have, we have a Zika breeding ground. And I've been told that Upper Gwinnett will take care of that. And I have to see that work, but that's something that's in progress and we're going to follow that along. I can't believe it's quite that close to the school, but you know, if the public would drive by, I think they might have a different opinion. It's very easy to get these things rolling along. Wow, I can't believe it's that big. Okay. Now, I want to talk about the computers or the laptops which were purchased or Chrome, Google Chromes?
Chromebooks.
Okay. I didn't know how much this was costing the district. I went through, I went through the website and I went there looking at all these things. It seems very good, but then in my view of spending and sustainable income and our expectations, I can't help but thinking, a lot of these kids, they got iPhones, like, wow, it's $600? And wow, I think somebody in your situation, kind of like the lunch, the lunch program, yeah, I'll give you lunch for free. But we think that, you know what, I don't mind helping out. I'm a senior citizen. How much is it? How much is this computer, whatever it's going to cost, 350, 380, 400? I don't know what they cost. But I don't think it would be really unreasonable to say, you know what, we consider this as something just like the lunch program. I want you to pay $200 for this. Oh, you don't want it? Okay, yeah, everybody wants everything as long as being provided for free. And we know how people, when they go to affairs, if they have an open thing, oh, well, it's over. I don't want anything now. So you know, free is something that I believe politicians use to entice people to get their votes. And anything that you get for free, there's a payment down the road. And I think the public is getting sick and tired of providing free to people that are well aware of what things cost, but they jump in and they can afford it themselves. So that's one thing. But you go ahead and spend the, you know, the money that you want to spend, the expenditures in technology and the computers and Google and Chrome, I can't imagine what's next, but I'm sure somebody will think of something. Did you ever think that the senior citizens are eating at Manah? Or maybe they're at the senior center getting a $2.50 meal? I mean, they got houses, they pay rent, or they pay taxes. These are honest situations. It's hard to believe. I know a lot of you people are making, you know, quite substantial salaries. You've got a fantastic gold-plated program with Obamacare. I mean, you may not even be allowed to have that. That's a whole issue that's got to be dealt with, okay? So it's hard to imagine somebody getting along on, how much you make on Social Security? Well, I get $980. How do you make it on that? It's very tough, young man. So I see the rent's going up and alls they say is, yeah, the school tax. You do everything about, that the parents are forced to pay. Now, I heard, oh, yes, alls we have now is Blue Cross now as the only provider on the exchange, and I heard it's going up 33%. I hope you take that into consideration when we're talking about the new taxes. Well, how much are you paying now? Oh, yeah, I was only paying $89 a month before. Yeah, you know what? They said it was going to be okay. Now I'm paying $850 a month. Where are you going to get this? Did you get a raise? Oh, no, I didn't get a raise. They cut me hours back. I only get 30 hours because you know what? I'd be eligible for that and they don't want to do that. So you know, we have well-meaning people that makes the lives of people really, really, really miserable, okay? And as Blue Cross, as I said, will be the only horse in town. I mean, that's the only way you're going to get medical, and I think that's pretty ridiculous. If it was planned so well, there'd be more than one person doing it, okay? Now, the last thing I want to talk about is Administrative Regulation 5131-2. That hasn't been visited for 10 years about the students, the students' personal technology, cellphone, and this, and what they can do. No, you can't have that. We got to take this. I was pretty amazed I was reading it. It's fairly extensive. I think with the developments in 10 years, I mean, you know, 10 years ago, wait a minute, I got it right here. This was the latest in phone, say, I'm a senior citizen, this is all I can afford, and that's why I got this, you know? I'm always trying to save money because, you know, I have to pay my school tax. So I think that we need to revisit 5131-2. 5131-2, you need to look at that and bring it up and make sure that every child, every student is well aware, oh, yeah, you know, I can take that from you. I can do this, I can do this. That was written a long time ago. I think it was longer than that. It was revisited and redone. You need to bring that up if you have all this other stuff because I think some of the parents like, oh, yeah, I think Ray Wilson might be tuning in to make sure that I want everyone to be safe. So I think you need to look into the what's going to happen when you have this technology. I know some people actually have a private server off-site, and that's caused an incredible amount of difficulty. Thank you so much.
Anybody else, please?
Hello. My name is Peter Habib. I live at 722 Park Road here in Lansdale. I'm not sure if you remember, but almost a year ago or so, I was here with my wife and daughter. We were talking about the inclusion program that North Penn has. And I wanted to come here today to talk a little bit about that and one area of it that kind of concerns me. The inclusion program, I'm sure, was based off the IEDA, the law that is there for children with special needs. Within that law, it states that it's there to strengthen the role and responsibility of parents and ensuring that families of such children have meaningful opportunities to participate in the education of their children at school and at home. Also within the law, it states about the IEP team. And the first thing that it puts as a member of the team are the parents of a child with disability. So it's all important that parents be an active and participant of the IEP team, but to actually do that is restricted by your participation by the Public School District Policy 1250. It says in there that the board welcomes and encourages visits to all the facilities and that it guides you to Regulation 1260. Within 1260, it says, "Parents or guardians must arrange visitation at least three school days in advance." Noting that these guidelines shall require the district to schedule a visitation within the three days is not required. So if I want to participate and see what's going on within the school that my daughter goes to, I need to write to the school principal at least three days in advance, three school days in advance, asking that I can come in to see what's going on, and I've got to wait and see exactly what's going on, you know, whether if I'm allowed or not to go on to see what's there. Also, it says that the visitation shall not exceed an hour. It also says the number of visitations that I'm allowed is only twice per 12-month period, and these may even be limited as per the, by the school itself. So I'm not sure how, as a parent of a child with special needs, that I can actively participate in the education of my child when these regulations are there. It's very prohibitive for a parent with special needs. You get a call, you get a note, you get an idea that something is going on, and to follow the guidelines and principles that you have put in place makes it very restrictive. I think it needs to be opened up and allowed at any time, that any time a parent wants to go in and visit the school, they should be allowed to. Just like that. Show up, knock on the door, and go in. That's the way it was when my daughter was in a pre-K. And also, that's the way it is at one of the places that I work. I happen to work at Merck. If a regulatory agency, FDA or from any other government, comes and knocks on the door, Merck is open 24/7, they can come 24/7 and allowed to be in. And to go in to see any place where production is being done, talk to anyone on the floor, look at any documents. So it's open. It's not being hid. So I would really like for the school board to open it up and allow parents more access into the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgy. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to move the agenda forward. Recommend approval of the minutes of the September 22, 2016 action meeting as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Tronock. Comments or questions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Let's start with committee reports, education, community, and policy. Mrs. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The ECP Committee held a meeting on October 10. Board policies and informational updates were presented at the meeting. Two new board policies were among the items on the evening's agenda. Board Policy Number 5154, Students About Hazing, was drafted in compliance with the amendment to the state of Pennsylvania's anti-hazing law. The policy defines hazing and addresses the required distribution of the policy, reporting requirements concerning any suspected incidents of hazing, enforcement of the policy, and penalties for violating the policy. The second policy, Board Policy Number 9365, Bylaws of the Board, Methods of Operation, Electronic Attendance at Meetings, was also presented. The purpose of this policy is to permit a board member to participate in a board meeting electronically provided certain criteria are met. This policy will be discussed further at the Board Work Session in November. Updates regarding the proposal that the Extra Innings Club assume responsibility for selling advertising via signage on the baseball field fence and the profits be used to support proposed capital improvements to the baseball field infrastructure were presented. This topic will be discussed at the November Board Work Session meeting. Also, a summary of departmental goals for elementary reading and mathematics for the 2016-17 school year was presented at the meeting. Key aspects of the goal plans include the following. Strengthening math content area knowledge through the use of Carnegie Math Institute. Developing and implementing curriculum-based unit assessments for ELA and mathematics. Supporting differentiated instruction in ELA and mathematics through the use of online resources such as Reading A through Z, MobiMax, Think Central, and New Zealand. And continuing professional development support of PA Core standards in math and ELA with a focus on text-dependent analysis and the mathematical practices. Overnight student trips were reviewed as well. Those overnight trips, as well as Board Policy Number 5154 about hazing, are included on the agenda this evening. The next ECP Committee meeting will be held on November 14. Thank you.
Any questions to the ECP tonight? Ask the question when you discuss the policy over the signage. We have competitive issues, Title IX issues. You have other issues with whose funds they are being shared with. I have no doubt in my mind that the football program and the baseball program are very successful and that they'll bring advertisers. But what about the general softball team and all the other Title IX issues that come to play with that issue? And then on top of that, what about Christine's office, who does that to raise funds to cover all their operations?
Now, we've actually discussed all of those issues and we're trying to kind of work up some kind of creative plan to get all the answers.
If it gets put into the general fund, you're trying to dedicate it, or I guess the proposal is maybe to dedicate those funds to capital improvements for the entire district. Maybe that eliminates that issue, but you know, I want to make sure that that's at least discussed.
Well, no. And actually, I thought about maybe like a dedicated percentage of a fund going for all other sports programs, right? So we've been talking about it and we'll talk about it, and that's why it's going to go to the board. Thank you.
Yeah, the feeling of the committee was that we did kick around a lot of those issues. Feeling of the committee was they wanted some discussion with the wider board to make sure there was consensus.
Yeah, I would think so. Finance, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Finance Committee met on September 26, 2016. The monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. Several residents spoke to the committee about the impact of excessive heat on students enrolled in buildings without air conditioning. Mr. Skraki reviewed the background regarding the Act One Index and the advantages, disadvantages, and timeline regarding passing a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. The committee recommended passing the resolution not to exceed the Act One Index. Mr. Skraki presented two draft calendars, one with Act One exceptions and one without. The discussion was linked to the resolution not to exceed the Act One Index. Mr. Skraki presented the current 2015-2016 end-of-year projections, which are still subject to final audit. Through the end of August, it appears the district spent about $2.1 million less than budgeted. $2.0 million of this positive variance will be recommended for transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Skraki presented information on three new bank depositories for investment of cash proceeds. All financial institutions have been vetted and collateral will be provided in the form of a federal home loan bank letter of credit. Mr. Skraki informed the committee that the official Act One Index for the 2017-2018 fiscal year was set at 2.5%. And Mr. Skraki finally reviewed the new investment policy that are permitted via Act 10 of 2016. Newly authorized investments include bankers' acceptances and commercial paper. Mr. Skraki recommended updating the district investment policy in concert with the solicitor's office. The committee recommended permitting the new investments only with prior board approval. Items recommended for this evening's action are the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund, approval of additional bank depositories, resolution not to exceed the Act One Index will appear on November's action agenda, and the 2017-2018 budget calendar. Next Finance Committee meeting will be held on October 31, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. here in the ESC. End of report.
Did we get the irony there? Halloween night for the First Plight meeting? That sounds awful. Any questions of finance tonight, Mr. D'Azio? Can you elaborate a little bit how the letters of federal, I'm sorry, you called a federal home loan protects us in any way? Because I really don't want to inherit a bunch of homes in Allentown or something else.
No, no, no. Kind of view this as an insurance policy. This is collateral that's permitted via Act 72, so we're insured up to $250,000 per investment under FDIC insurance. The federal home loan bank letter of credit is an insurance policy in case it would be a bank failure, that we would be made whole in excess of the $250,000. So we do have three depositories for your approval this evening, and in each case, the collateral will be the federal home loan bank letter of credit. We're planning on investing $5 million in each of the three financial institutions. The rate of return is 0.5% as a money market account. We can withdraw the money at any time.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Schilling?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The Support Service Committee met on Monday, September 26, 2016. The committee discussed the following topics. North Penn High School will host the College Fair with Montgomery County Community College, PA Association for College Admission Counseling, North Penn School District Alumni Association is implementing the Knights of Honor framers to be installed in the corridor of North Penn High School to honor alumni and former staff pending fire marshal approval. Update of the North Penn High School Fire Project, update of capital projects, and a proposal for required maintenance to prepare the North Penn High School football and soccer fields for the upcoming seasons. Gwendore community members expressed concern regarding lack of air conditioning at Gwendore and other schools in the district. Also, an update of Montgomery Elementary School renovations. An addition project was provided. There were eight change orders discussed and included in the evening's agenda for board consideration. The construction manager will present a pictorial update of the Montgomery renovation project at the next Support Service meeting. A change order for Hatfield Elementary School renovations project was discussed and is included in the evening's agenda for board consideration. Also included in this evening's agenda is approval for the Montgomery County Community College Fair to be hosted at North Penn High School. No rental fee, but will be charged for custodial hours for setup and breakdown. Our next meeting will be held on Monday, October 31, at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Yeah. Any questions to Support Services this evening? Mrs. Murphy's not here. Does anybody have North Penn Education Foundation? Mrs. Tronock?
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The foundation is very excited about a free event it is hosting that the community is invited to attend. On Monday, October 24, the Celebrate the Arts series kicks off at North Penn High School with Wendell Redford and independent Ralph Waldo Emerson scholar, who reenacts Emerson's sermons and orations in period costume. During the school day, Redford will deliver key passages of Emerson's classic essay, Selfreliance, to 11th and 12th grade advanced placement students in two in-school assemblies. Then at 7:30 p.m. in A33 at North Penn High School, Redford will present Emerson's Address on Education to the community. The event is free and open to the community. The goal of the speaker series, proposed by North Penn English teacher Janet Kratz, is to highlight the accomplishments of writers, past and present, for students and the community. Future speakers will include the poet laureate of Philadelphia and North Penn graduate Yolanda Wisher, North Penn High School Class of '94, and a CBS news anchor. At our last meeting, the foundation was happy to learn that our commitment to fund course advancement classes for economically disadvantaged students at North Penn High School was successful. This summer, 12 students were successful in passing and advancing into a higher-level course for the 2016-2017 school year. We received many notes from students thanking the foundation for the opportunity to participate in the summer course and that without our funding, it would not have been possible. The more than $6,000 needed for the program was provided through the foundation's Educational Improvement Tax Credit Program, which receives money from local businesses, including Univest, Waste Management, and Giant. Upcoming efforts include supporting the North Penn Lansdale Catholic Flag Football Game on Thanksgiving, a fundraiser with Whole Foods, and the staff tribute program. Trustees will also be receiving mid-year grant applications to implement by June. If you have any questions, you can contact the foundation's Executive Director, Christine Liberowski, at the district offices. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the Educational Foundation this evening? Safe Schools, Mrs. Tronock?
We do not have a meeting this month. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Monday, November 14, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. at the ESC.
Thank you. Any questions for Safe Schools? Personnel, Mrs. Tronock?
Okay, the Personnel Committee met in executive session on October 4, 2016, from 5:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. to discuss matters of personnel negotiations, potential litigation, and teacher discipline. End of report.
North Monco Technical Career Center?
That's me. Thank you. North Monco Technical Career Center met on Monday, October 17. We discussed several issues regarding bell schedule. Apparently, there are three sessions. There's an AM1 and
North Monco Technical Career Center met on Monday, October 17th. We discussed several issues regarding bell schedule. Apparently that there are three, there are three sessions. There's an AM 1, and AM 2, and a PM session. There was some discussion as to creating just two sessions. However, the superintendents are going to get together and talk about bell schedules and, and things of that nature and also work on staff development. Currently, North Penn sends 428 students to North Monco Technical Career Center. That's about 42% of the population. We talked about programs that are on probation, which means that their attendance is low and those programs are horticulture, carpentry and commercial art. They, we purchased books for the auto collision repair students and we're trying to break the stereotype of the tech center being a dirty work kind of place and trying to get more and more people to get into the tech center. There's one student from Hatboro that, that is attending the, the tech center and they're paying that tuition for that student. And I believe that's all I have. Next meeting, I think, is November 7th. Thank you.
Any questions to the North Monco Technical Career Center?
I was just curious, you had mentioned enrollment was down in certain areas, but overall, the enrollment's like 42%?
For us, it's 42%.
Is that about par with what it has been in the past?
Yes. There's currently 1,009 students that attend North Monco.
And that's been roughly?
Actually, it's increasing.
Oh, okay.
Did they give you any reasons why they had some lack of interest in some of those fields? Is it, I mean, I can understand possibly commercial art because of technology impacts, but I mean, I'm a little shocked at that. I mean, I spent a lot of years out there and when I was on the workforce investment board, you know, we had blue collar jobs, white collar jobs, we had gold collar jobs. Some of the people coming out of the trade schools are making twice what a college graduate makes and, and their lifetime's earnings is almost double a college graduate. So, I don't get the stigma that...
I don't get it either. You know, we keep talking about it. We keep talking about trying to get parents to at least tour that building and see what they have because, again, we've had people, we've had speakers come and say that there are jobs. There are jobs in manufacturing.
Absolutely.
There are jobs in, you know, carpentry and I don't know. I don't know how you get people interested in it, but that's, that's the goal.
Just ask their parents what, how much it costs the last time they called an HVAC personnel.
Exactly. Right? Right?
Wow, that's really shocking.
Well, anybody out there, please, if anybody wants to go see the school, please contact me. I'd be happy to, I'm an advocate.
All right. The Montgomery County Intermediated Union, we have no report this evening, so we're going to flip to our superintendent's report. Dr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of amended board policy 2510 regarding administration compensation system for administrators and amended board policy 4316 regarding personnel harassment per item 7716A through E.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Leonard? Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend adoption of the resolution regarding Capital Reserve Fund transfer for the 2015-16 fiscal year, thereby transferring $2 million in general funds to the Capital Reserve Fund per item BA4A through B.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend adoption of the resolution regarding Capital Reserve Fund transfer for the 2015-16 fiscal year, thereby transferring $2 million in general funds to the Capital Reserve Fund per item BA4A through B.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of general fund money market investment accounts with People's Security Bank and Trust, First Resource Bank and Royal Bank America. The authorized signatories for the accounts will be the board president, board secretary and board treasurer per item 8316.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval to allow Pennsylvania Association for College Admission Counseling to use North Penn High School gyms to host Montgomery County College Fair in accordance with school board policy 1330 per item 8616.
Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of change order GC11 to Low Bar Incorporated for the Hatfield Elementary School additions and renovations project at a change of contract amount of $9,880.49 for completion and remediation of the underground storm water basin number two per item 8716A through B.
So moved. Motion by Mrs. Prokowski. I need a second, guys. Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of deduct change order FP1 to Accelerated Fire Protection Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School addition and renovations project at a change of contract amount and savings of $3,578 for various changes during construction per item 8816A through B.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of change order EC1 to Borough Construction Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School addition and renovations project at a change of contract amount of $3,762.1 for various changes during the construction per item 8916A through B.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski?
Second.
Second by Mr. D'Azio. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of a change order GC1 to Low Bar Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School and addition and renovations project at a change of contract amount of $10,339.93 for various changes during construction per item 9016A through B.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions?
Just want to say thank you.
All those in favor? Approved?
Recommend approval of personnel items BA5A through G in additions to the North Penn School District substitute lists 2016-17 per item BA6A through F.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
I will note by that action, we did approve our new high school assistant principal. We do have a retirement in the high school about to happen and we're pleased this evening to have in our audience Donna Dome. So, Donna, if you'd just give a little wave there. If the board members would like to introduce themselves to Donna, she'll be here after the meeting. Likewise, members of the public in attendance this evening. I recommend personnel action extra duty. It's a 2016-17 extra duty per item 8416A through C.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio? I need a second, people. Second by Mrs., I'm sorry, it was Mrs. Leonard, okay. Just wanted to make sure I didn't look great up anyway. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Abstain?
Abstain.
Approved. We had five board members out of six vote for it.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA7A through B.
So moved. Motion by Mr. D'Azio, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA8A through B, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved?
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA9, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski? Anybody else? Second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved? Let's move forward with our finance report. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Skrocky, let's do the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of quick updates before I read the treasurer's report. First off, as Mr. D'Azio indicated earlier, the Act One Index for the 2017-18 year has now been set and that figure's 2.5%. Also, our 2015-16 audit is about 95% complete at this point. It will be presented by Mr. Furman at the October 31st Finance Committee meeting and then we'll be asking the full board at the November action meeting for approval. We'll also be submitting our annual financial report to the Pennsylvania Department of Education within the next few weeks. Also, a reminder to our taxpayers, the end of the base period is on October 31st. Any payments made after October 31st will incur a 10% penalty. On the treasurer's report, this is for the month of September 2016. Cash receipts for the month totaled $43,238,226.17 while disbursements totaled $33,514,896.15. The district's total available funds at the end of September were $170,135,269.79. End of report.
Thank you. May we move forward with sanction and approval of invoices?
I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of September 2016 in the amount
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. D'Azio. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Approved? Anyone from the board have other business? Anyone from the administration have other business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved.